Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Halifax Board of Selectments meeting for April 27, 2021, despite the noise in the background. We're going to mention that we are being filmed by Area 58, which will be available to you on Community Access Television and YouTube at future date.
You've also got Zoom on tonight.
All right, yes. And we're being Zoomed for those of you who would like to come in and not come in. As per usual, we're going to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance if you will join with me. It is so much better doing the pledge here in person than it is to try to do it in a Zoom meeting because everybody's coming on at different times. It's hard to keep track of what's going on. We're going to start off with the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything to add? Does anyone have anything that they've noticed that is incorrect?
I have none.
If I can have a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Selectmen's minutes from March 30, 2021. Has everyone had an opportunity to review them?
I have.
I'll take that as a yes. Can I get in?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Garan.
I move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Venda warrant number 105, $195,363.64. Amnest commitment for 4/5, 21 to 4/11, 21, $22,996.32. Amnest commitment for $47,359.68. Payroll warrant number 106 for $391,105.47. Venda warrant 107 for $79,681.31. Withholding warrant number 108 for $126,778.28.
Can I get a second?
I'll second all except for payroll internal numbers, 2493, 2494, 2497, 2507. I have to accuse myself of those. And then there were no law items on that.
I don't think so. Troy, you have-- That would be in the other folder anyway.
Yeah, you have the orange folder. I think there's copies of the bills in them.
What, I don't think there's--
There was a lot of law bills.
After 2497?
2507. I think I can second all the vendor warrant. I don't see any law items in here.
No, there isn't.
Okay.
I'll move those that other than the ones that are missing by-- Mr. Lord Andrews.
I'll second them. All those in favor except for 2493, 2494, 2497, and 2507?
Aye.
I will move vendor warrant number 105, item 2493, 2494.
No, Tom, sorry, that wasn't-- Wasn't the vendor warrant, was the payroll?
Oh, okay, 106.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. We got it. I will now move payroll warrant number 106, 2493, 2494, 2497, and 2507. Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Rick Hughes.
I move to approve the payments of the following Selectment bills dated April 27, 2021. Stand and gravel revolving account for $855.
Is that it?
No. I have a little sticky problem there. Town hall electricity, $1,356.54. Sorry for the delay.
That's all of them?
And the last one is Selectment expense account, $221.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye. All right, we have a few minutes before our first appointment. So Charlie, do you want to start with the mail?
Um, no, a couple of things here. One is, first I want to note the passing of John Peck, who's a longtime member of the Conservation Commission. I'm not sure that he served in other capacities for the town, but I know he was long-term in charitable work. His family, for instance, hosted, you know, Thanksgiving, I believe, at the country club, you know, people who didn't have some other place to go, as an example. So if you could give a moment of silence for Mr. Peck, please.
One moment of silence, please. Thank you.
And probably on the happier side, the line dancing group is going to start line dancing here in the Great Hall using, you know, the following-- the COVID protocols that are still in place. They had worked that with Bob Larry, our board of health agents. So next Tuesday, they'll be up here in the afternoon for an hour. There's one cemetery deed to sign. Let's see if I can. Road opening, 284 Monpont Street for a natural gas main replacement. We have stipulations from the Highway Surveyor and a detail requested by the police chief.
Move it. Second. Where is 284?
I think it's east of 106 and 58, if I remember right.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
I can check. But, um--
Guys, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Charlie?
We're in a hearing, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's up by, um, yeah, it's right before the, um, the Halls and Authorities. Yeah, they were, um, going in to show that's the one, 284-- what was it, 284 Monpont?
Yes.
Right across from the Wook 58.
Yeah, that's the one, right, right. They were going to do a development up there, but then they stopped, and I think they were just cleaning it up.
Okay, that helped. So, um, next thing, gasoline diesel fuel contract. The Highway Department's recommending extending the fuel contract for the third and last year of the contract with Dennis K. Burke. We'd be going back out to bid in the spring of '22 for another possible three-year contract. Well, did you approve-- you approved the road opening, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the next is the contract.
Anyone have any comments? Done. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye.
COVID, we've had 10 additional cases since April 17. That brings a total of 513, with 18 in the last 14 days, provisionally bringing help acts back to the yellow from the red. We're still waiting for the federal government to issue complete guidelines on the rescue package, still waiting for confirmation from the state and Bridgewater State University about vaccine clinic there, but unless the state goes into more depth about increasing the number of clinics across the state, I think it's starting to look less likely that that's going to happen. There was a return to work notice that was sent out for the board's instructions from its last meeting. Library Director Gene Gilat has asked that the board grant an exception to the May 1 start date for return to work from Marie Cody and allow her to continue her work remotely until her last day of work on May 14.
Is she resigning?
Jean is on-- she's on if you want.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, 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 Jean.
Okay, yeah, um, I'm asking this just so that she can give me two weeks' notice so that we can tie up a lot of loose ends. It's the start of the month. We have a lot of publicity that goes out at the start of the month for the various programs that we have. I'm actually in the middle of writing the long-range plan, so we have a committee that I'm trying to form and meetings that I need to set up in which would be her responsibility to help me to do that. Um, you know, there's the website that I need to get into and learn how to do that. Uh, you know, she-- she worked at the library for 16 years, so to kind of wrap that up in, like, four days-- she was away on vacation last week, and then she had a personal loss the week before that, so we have to do a lot of wrapping up. And, um, yes, um, she's agreed that her last day will be on May 14. And then she would give-- so that would be like the two weeks' notice. And she just doesn't feel comfortable coming back into the building. So it really looks best for the library, but, you know, your decision. I think it's, um-- I-- I would really appreciate it if she could do that.
Anyone?
And can I say, I apologize for, you know, for the late notice on that. I just put the letter in the mailbox today, and I honestly didn't mean to hit you with that. It's just that we were talking today and, you know, agreeing on April 30th this Friday, and then it just seemed a lot to kind of get together in four days. So I do apologize for that.
I don't have a problem with it at this point. Got notice.
Well, two weeks. If she's not coming back at all, if she's resigning--
Right.
Then two weeks' notice could be valid.
And based on needs, I think it's a reasonable request by the library director. I would be in favor of it if--
Do you need a motion to--
Yes, we should have a motion, yes.
I'll make a motion to make the exception to the policy, uh--
In this instance? In this instance?
In this instance, yes.
Can I get a second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Um, additional information on this, the state will allow additional outdoor activity starting on May 10. That was a statement by the governor earlier today. We refer to reopening on May 29 and a planned full reopening on August 1. Obviously, all that's dependent on caseload and vaccines. Indoor gathering limit increases are going to be going to 200 on May 29. I'll talk with board health agent Larry about increasing our attendee capacities in the meeting rooms, in particular, the Great Hall and the all-purpose room. Town meeting is not a gathering per the state's directives, so it's not covered by that situation or any limits. Given the maintenance date for the town meeting, we'll have the same setup as last year, using the two rooms and the school and the AV equipment to connect them. On the municipal campus building project--
It's 6:45. We have a hearing at 6:45. All right, scheduled appointment. Mr. Graves?
Yes. It's now 6:45, and we have an appointment with Owen Graves of 253 South Street regarding speed limit signs for South Street.
Yes, how you doing? Well, you know, I've lived on this street for five and a half years.
Mr. Graves, just if you can move the mic closer to--
All right. Hello? Is it even on? Can you hand me?
Yeah.
All right. So I've lived on this street for five and a half years, or in the town of Halifax. Speed limit's 30, or supposedly it's supposed to be 30. There's no speed limit signs. People go from nowhere and closest, starting at 30, but 40, 50, 60, from one end from the-- from the start of 106, going past it down into Middleborough. The first two years I lived here, two deaths up by going into Franklin Street. I've had people come on my front lawn, smack in the telephone pole, coming off of Franklin-- uh, coming off of River Street. I've got skid marks up and down the street where I'm at. I could leave in the morning. I could be a mile up on the road, nobody's behind me. All of a sudden, out of nowhere. It-- it's just, there's no rhyme to reason. They just speed. But there's no reminder for them to tell them what it is. It's not an open country road where you can do what you want because they think nobody's around. Well, there are. So they need a reminder. I drive, I do plumbing and heating, I drive all day long. I see signs everywhere, the nice flashy ones that remind you, you know, you need that consistent reminder because this is what people are doing all day long. They're on their phones, they're looking down, they're not looking up. You've got something electronic flashing or saying something or anything, it helps out. Whether you're kids, you know, middle-aged, elderly, you need-- you need something to feel safe by, and we don't have that. When we moved in, the first thing I did was bought a fence. I didn't want to, but I have young kids that I needed a deterrent to keep them from going towards the street. It just, uh, you know, it's too much. And now that we're out there putting them on the-- putting them on the school bus, you know, I've cut my bushes back that have been there for, I don't know how long, but I had to cut them back just so we can pull out of the driveway for people coming around the corner. And they still hit the brakes as the school-- as I'm trying to get my kid on the school bus or the other kids. It's just, uh, it's-- it's too much. You know, it's-- it's not a well-traveled road, you know, where there's not a lot of traffic, but the traffic that does go down there, they think it's the Tour de France. I'm not the Tour de France, you know, which is what I'm doing. Thank you. It just, it's-- it's too much.
I might add, because I've lived your pain living on South Street, in particular motorcycles are incredibly scary because they are really, really screaming up the street. Over the years, there have been some attempts to add extra patrols and whatnot, but this is something maybe we could and should refer to the Highway Safety Team. We actually have a committee that looks into these matters.
Yep. Yeah, I understand there's going to be a process, so--
Yeah, yeah, and I think that would be an appropriate place to have it be brought up. We can even maybe let you know when that committee meets, although typically it's during the day, so it may not be convenient for you. But yeah, we absolutely can bring that to their attention and have some conversation about it and see what Highway and the police may have to offer.
It just, you know, people today, they're impatient.
Yeah.
So even if we're doing-- if even if you're doing the speed limit or close to it, you start to slow down, put a blinker on, and it's happened to me, it's happened to my wife, go to take a left in our driveway, they try to pass us. We almost get hit twice. I just--
It's funny when you mentioned, you look down the street and there's no traffic, and then suddenly you look in the rearview and somebody's right up behind you. And I've had that experience many times over the years, and again, a few of your pain. And it probably should be looked at harder than it has been in the past, and this is a good impetus to do that. And appreciate you coming forward. We will keep you posted--
Okay.
--and see what we can do for you.
All right, thanks for taking-- thanks for listening. Give my time.
Thank you for coming--
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you want a motion to traffic study or--
Um, I don't think we need a motion for traffic study, no.
Um, the campus building project, I know that the needs committee's been needing, they, I believe, wanted to talk to Attorney Mayo about the possibility of a community build option. I think there was one or two other questions--
Yeah.
--you wanted to forward, so go ahead.
So there was a question over community build and how that process would proceed. And then there was a question on just the-- the bid process, if we could move forward with a different type of build process, if we're going to do community build, half-community build. Can we do, you know, the excavation and the foundation and have somebody else come in and do it, or just the breakup of doing an addition over at the museum, getting a set of drawings done? I think if, from, you know, Scott's initial discussions with the same engineer that's been used for Pope's, it seems like it would be an affordable solution to provide a senior center for the short term while we look at all the other municipal buildings. I'm not saying that we can get it done this year, but it would be possible to have a plan to move forward to do something for less than a million dollars.
Absolutely, why, that makes perfect sense. And as far as the library goes, it would seem logical that we could maybe relocate that if we wanted--
The museum.
Uh, excuse me--
Yeah, so the idea is--
It's a Pope's, correct?
Yeah, so the idea really was to take more of a community approach on what's going on at the museum--
Yeah.
--so that we could get possibly some community hours from the seniors or other people in town, help catalog--
I was going to say catalog.
Take pictures, all that, and really put together displays that can be put up at Pope's Tavern and know what we actually have for basically inventory of everything. And then maybe we could put up like a showcase in the Great Hall or maybe at the library where we're really more showing off the history of Halifax. Right now, the museum's really not used other than holidays in Halifax.
Holidays in Halifax, yes.
And the same, you know, we-- we all know the issues at Pope's Tavern.
Yeah.
Every one of us knows the issues at Pope's Tavern, so the roof is getting done there to save the building. Maybe they could set up the museum on the bottom floor. Maybe we have some sort of storage area on the-- on the top floor.
You could almost rotate things and have different showings at different times of the year. That's what we talked about once before.
So if we went forward with an addition at the museum building, we would have to keep a library of some sorts in the building because that's a deed restriction?
That was a deed restriction, yeah.
So I was just hoping to get the support of the board to actually have Larry really look into it other than, you know, just a-- I think he would have to take some time and probably some-- a fair amount of money to dig into the issue of the community build.
Well, it's certainly a need, and, you know, this is a community project for the community. I-- I would certainly support this kind of effort. There's no reason not to.
I would hope that the community supports it as well, because that's where the downfall has been, is that the community hasn't supported doing anything for the seniors at this point in time. And the years I've been here, it's been brought before the town at least five times.
The other thing I was looking for support for was, I don't know if we need a motion, but a request to the Plymouth County Sheriff's Department to see if we can get on their schedule for work on some of the buildings, whether it's, you know, they work on the building with us, you know, framing or electrical or plumbing or what have you, or-- the one thing I've noticed being on the-- on the committee is we've gone around to every building in town. And every building in town needs work.
Absolutely.
And we spent all that money at the school, but now we're having mechanical failures at the school with some of the--
Heating.
--hot water pipes--
Yeah.
--and some of the other plumbing pipes. But I think if we move forward with the short term of the solution for the senior center, then we can start to talk about a campus area solution for police and fire because there's issues at the fire station. The issue really, the chief jobs, you can correct me if I'm wrong on the police station, but it's not really an issue of space, but it's an issue of layout.
Functional space, yeah. It's been that way since day one, actually.
So--
I remember Chief Manugian complaining about it and being chastised because he got practically a brand-new building and was complaining about it, but he was right. It wasn't functional for what they needed.
So it does seem like police with this committee, we're trying to get a short-term, mid-term, and long-term plan.
Yeah.
And just wanted to make sure before I reached out to the Plymouth County Sheriff's Office, when they start doing work again--
They are incredibly good and helpful. They have since modified some of their programs a little bit because I've worked with them in Plymouth several times, and they've been absolutely great. But yeah, you should reach out to them and see what they're willing to do anymore.
Okay.
Because they were going to put some limitations on new construction-type things because they were running into problems with the trades groups.
Okay.
So it's definitely worth a conversation with them to see how they feel about it.
As well as the colleges.
Okay.
School projects.
Good. I did talk-- I'm not sure that Silver Lake would be able to do too much with this where they're kind of behind on last year's projects.
And based on how they operate, it's a very slow process.
Mr. Sherman?
That becomes a little problematic.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes?
Just so you know, we're now-- we're at 14.
That means after 14 people, we are going to have to adjourn the meeting. So we're 14 right now?
We're 14, I believe, right now.
All right, so we're good for now.
So it-- do we need a vote for me to reach out, or is everybody okay with me reaching out?
Do we need a vote, Charlie?
You put it on the record on voters.
Yeah.
You wanted to consult with Larry and you wanted to contact the sheriff's office.
Yeah, makes sense.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
What I would recommend to the board is you move to your 7 o'clock.
Yep. Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Talk on the agenda with the 7 o'clock we have here.
Yeah. That's what we're doing.
Hello?
Hi. Can I talk for a few minutes and then--
Sure.
--if you have questions?
Yeah, introduce yourself and talk away.
And I don't hear too well, just to--
So people, everybody talk loud, including me.
Good evening, Mr. Milias, Mr. Andrews, and Mr. Garan. I'd like to thank you, first of all, for the appreciation letter the Board of Selectmen sent to me in December for my work on cleaning up litter in town. I'd also like to thank you for allowing me to meet with you tonight to advocate for Article 54 for the upcoming town meeting to see if the town will vote to adopt the following ban on the sale of miniature single-use-- single-use containers for alcoholic beverages as a general bylaw. I am requesting that you, the Board of Selectmen, recommend to pass the article at the May 10 town meeting. When I submitted the article February 22, I also included a letter with my reasoning why I advocated for this article. I'd like to update you today with further information. I started collecting NIPS on January 23, 2019. In 2019, I collected 3,703 NIPS. In 2020, I collected 2,488, and thus far, in 2021, in less than four months, I have collected 2,252. So the total for the 27 months is 8,443. I have four approximate one-mile routes from my house that I regularly litter-bust. I have collected 1,433 NIPS along those four routes just this year. In this bag, I have 243 NIPS I collected from April 19 to April 24, just six days. 156 of those NIPS were from four litter-busting mornings on my four regular routes. I had done all these routes within the previous 13 days. On April 24, an additional 59 NIPS were collected along Aldana Road as part of the Team Aldana Cleanup, which is part of the Halifax Beautifications Committee Well-Organized Cleanup Day aided by the Halifax Highway Department. On that day, I also was given another 28 NIPS from a South Street resident. Separately, two people who participated in Halifax Town Cleanup Day picked up 426-- 427 NIPS, mostly along just part of Elm Street. Between April 10 and April 24, a Hanson group called Clean Hanson worked to pick up litter. On the Clean Hanson Facebook page, there were 17 posts from people who had picked up litter and recorded the number of-- litter and recorded the number of NIPs picked up. Collectively, the posts totaled 2,762 NIPs. Some people say that we should enforce littering laws instead of a ban. I researched and found out that Halifax has no local litter laws. On a state level, there are essentially two laws covering litter. One is for people who do large-scale littering. The other law allows the registrar to take away your license for a period of seven days. On April 20th, Police Chief Shaws wrote to me that since January 1st, 2019, the Halifax Police has issued no citations for littering. He also said that the department had a couple of illegal dumping cases that were investigated and where complaints were requested through the courts. He also stated that, as you are aware, our resources are stretched thin. At times, we only have two officers patrolling the town. I don't think our department has the resources, the funding, or the personnel to deal with the littering problem other than educating the residents by public service announcement or social media on the effects of littering on our community. I also requested information from Police Chief Shaws regarding DWIs. Between January 1st, 2019, and April 22nd, 2021, only 12 arrests for DWI occurred in Halifax. During that same timeframe, only three cases of possession of an open container in a motor vehicle were recorded. In my February 22nd letter, I listed several litter-busting hazards. A couple weeks ago, I was bitten by a tick while litter-busting. On a Clean Hanson page, a litterbuster had to suspend litter-busting because he contracted a bad case of poison ivy while litter-busting. In my February 22nd letter, I mentioned two men who've been injured while litter-busting this year. On January 2nd, 92-year-old Robert Mack Woodford was struck and killed by a vehicle while picking up litter along a street in Macon, Georgia. He'd walk his sidewalk every day picking up litter. On January 20th, 77-year-old John Cofflin from Agawam, Massachusetts, was struck by a car while litter-busting and paralyzed from the neck down. He'd been an active litterbuster for years, walking miles every day cleaning up litter. Sadly, on April 17th, John Cofflin succumbed to injuries and died. Falmouth, Chelsea, and Maspia passed bans. Nora has an article banned to be in the sale of NIPs on their May 3rd town meeting. A Plymouth resident stated that she would be working to get an article on their fall town meeting. I believe some people from the Clean Hanson group are looking closely at what Halifax decides on the May 10th meeting. I wrote a letter to Pembroke Select Board to request that they work toward a ban in their town. As I stated in my February 22nd letter, my hope is, as I have personally tried to make a small difference in the neighborhood in which I live, I'm hoping Halifax will set an example for our neighboring communities so that they too will pass a ban on the sale of NIPs. Again, I am requesting that you, the Board of Selectmen, recommend to pass Article 54 at the May 10th town meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'm sure we all applaud your efforts, especially in the NIP thing. I cruise up and down South Street where I live, and it's amazing to me every morning how many NIP bottles I find out there. It's really incredible. I think you alluded to the real issue, which was Halifax alone won't do much to prevent a lot of the littering. It has to be a joint effort with all the surrounding communities because for the most part, a lot of the litter is generated by people bringing it into town and tossing it out of the window by the time they get here and haven't drank it. And I'm sure it works the other way, too. Let me take a poll here and see how everybody feels about it.
You know, firstly, I don't drink, and I can't understand how many liquor stores, knowing the problem that we have, are still selling it. We could put a ban on it in here in Halifax. I agree. We could put it as an example, but convincing the other towns to do the same seems to be the biggest problem, I think.
I'm not, I really have a bad hearing case, I'm not sure.
Basically, my thing, the biggest impediment to putting this on the ground is trying to convince the other towns that they should ban it also.
Well, I'm gonna be working real hard towards that and to get other towns involved.
I have to agree with Chief Shaws, it was difficult unless the public, when they see somebody do that, they should see them, get the license plate number and the time and date that things happened, to report them because if nobody reports it, the law enforcement can't do very much about it.
Well, unfortunately, too, the law enforcement has to see somebody doing it in the act, and especially NIP bottles, they're pretty small, they're pretty tough to pick out when someone's whipping one out of a window. The thing with NIP bottles is, I mean, it's pretty obvious they lend themselves to immediate consumption, and that would be while people are in the vehicle, and that's unfortunate and obviously problematic. Go ahead.
Kathy Lanatra is listed as being here?
Rep. Lanatra, if you can hear me, is there any movement on...
State level.
State level of deposits for NIPs or banning of NIPs? She's muted, yeah. Have you heard if there's any movement on banning statewide or requiring a deposit on the bottles?
I would, I'm not exactly, are you asking about a statewide ban?
Yeah.
Well, I'm kind of frustrated at the state level because at the state level, they were trying to get a five-cent deposit, and that has gone through both, it came, it was proposed as a bill or was a bill both in 2017 and 2019, and it didn't pass. But even if that passes, it's still gonna be me or other people picking up those NIPs. And half of them, if you will take a look at any of them, half of them wouldn't even be able to get redeemed because they're too damaged. And a nickel today is, in, the first original bottle bill is 1983 or '84, so in those terms, it's like less than two cents in those same dollar amount. So you're asking...
I would support them putting a much higher, a much higher deposit rate on those bottles to make sure that they got returned. I would think it would make more sense for it to be a much higher amount. I wouldn't go, I wouldn't think five cents would be enough. I'd put a dollar on each one of them. Because the amount that you're collecting there every day that you go out is way too much for, it's way too much for one person to do, and I appreciate how much work you've put in over the years. I guess, I guess I wouldn't want, without hearing the opposite side, and that's the people that sell them in town and what they're doing to try to, I would want to hear both sides of what they're doing to try to stop the problem as well.
I was just gonna suggest that we should probably put out an invitation to the liquor establishment owners in town and get some feedback from them as well, if they have any thoughts on the issue, because it does impact them. I think it's, could be the right thing to do to at least ask them to put some input into it. But again, keeping in mind that anything we do in Halifax, success is predicated on everybody surrounding us as well. And I don't know, can we put a deposit unilaterally?
I don't know, I don't think the town could.
You would need special legislation, just like you would for the ban. That's what I thought. But we can do that, we can start with at least putting out an invitation and get some conversation going.
Rep. Lanatra, if you're there now, if you wouldn't mind unmuting?
Hi, sorry about that. I'm at the State House now, I'm trying to multitask with budget making, wanted to hop on. So the question was, is there legislation for, to ban NIPs? Is that the question?
To ban NIPs or to put a deposit on them, that would be more, it would be, you know, more than five cents, so there'd be an actual value to pick them up. You know, we have a resident here that's collected...
Thousand.
Yes, yes, we're familiar. She's actually received citations from the State House for all the work that she's done. I will look into that. I know there is a bill that was filed for, to put a deposit on NIPs, but I'm not sure if it was more than five cents. I can look into that for you, to ban it. I know that last session there was legislation filed, but I'm not sure this session. Something I will look into and get back to as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think waiting for some kind of a response from Representative Lanatra and, again, maybe sending out an invite and set up another time to talk about this, I think is in order.
I'd like to suggest one more thing, that a letter from this board or the Health Commissioner to other towns surrounding us, asking them what their stand would be on banning NIPs and...
Great idea.
I'll second that.
Great idea. If that's a motion and it's seconded...
Yep.
We'll vote on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's see what we can do for you and try to get some more input from the local communities surrounding us and from the local business establishments.
You want me to do that? Or you're gonna try to do...
We're gonna do it.
Okay, all right.
We're gonna do it.
All right, great.
And try to get a consensus, because nothing works without a consensus, and, well, things can work without a consensus, but they don't work as well without a consensus.
All right.
And again, we applaud you for your efforts. It's just an amazing effort. I'm overwhelmed by it.
Well, thank you.
And we want to thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you. We may have taken something out of order there.
It was, we had simultaneous things going on. The next thing you'll be doing is the hearing on whether to opt out of the state's mosquito control program.
Right.
I believe there are several people here, so if the board wants, it's not a public, it's not a legal public hearing other than it was required, but so it's certain input.
So one by one, if people wanted to come up to the table to express their views about the possibility of the town opting out, if anybody's here on mosquito control, on opting out, if anybody's here, if they could come up to a table and identify their, give their name and address and identify themselves to the board, and it doesn't appear anybody's here.
Kim, do you want to go first?
You can go first, but I don't know who you are.
Yeah, I know you.
Yep.
Kim Elliott and I know each other pretty well. She, of course...
Fred, we need you out of the mud.
Thanks. Kim Elliott and I know each other pretty well. Obviously, she lost her daughter. I actually survived Triple E. I was seven years old, so I wanted to actually explain what I went through as a seven-year-old. I had a temperature of 107 degrees. I was hallucinating badly. I was seeing bugs literally everywhere, like cockroaches, ants, everything. I was in the hospital for weeks. I was literally put in ice baths trying to get my temperature down, and I'm actually very fortunate to actually have survived Triple E. I mean, the only effect that I have is I have some long-term memory problems, but that's it. A lot of other people are not nearly as fortunate, so I'm definitely against any type of opting out of mosquito control. This is a serious issue, and it affects, it's affected a lot of people. It's affected me, it's affected many people in this town, and I just think that's a terrible idea, so.
Thank you, Fred. Kim, do you want to offer anything?
Sure, come on up. Hi, Sarah Nobles from Fifth Lincoln Street. I just...
You really just need to speak up for that one.
Sorry. I agree, I don't think it's a good idea to opt out. I don't see any logical reason to do so. We need the protection. We've had cases of Triple E fairly regularly over the past several years. I know that it would only opt us out of the spraying and not of the drive-by, the aerial spraying rather, not the drive-by spraying from the, so it's not even a full opting out of the program. It seems illogical to opt out when we desperately need the protection, when we have had cases. I'm not really sure if there's a reason, if there was somebody who was wanting us to opt out or if we're just doing this for procedural reasons. So I guess I wanted to ask you if there was a reason or a concern that was raised, or...
So Tom, yep, yep, go ahead. The state had issued a letter out to all the communities saying there's this possibility of opting out, but if you're considering it, you need to have a hearing.
Okay.
Which is what we're doing right now. So several weeks ago, the board said, well, we need to make sure, even if we don't want to opt out, that we've given residents an ability to speak to that issue.
Okay.
That's what this is. The board, at least so far, has not received anybody, any communications from anyone indicating they do want to opt out. The board has not so far indicated that they're interested in opting out, but they felt that they needed to have this opportunity, whether you were for it or against it...
Okay.
For everybody to come in.
Okay, well, I think we should definitely stay in the program. I think it just makes sense to do so, so, thank you.
Thank you. I think one of the more interesting aspects of the spraying program is that the state doesn't just give this stuff up. They identify a real problem. I mean, we've had occasions in the past where we've actually gone to the state and asked them to spray because things were so bad. So I think Charlie just put it correctly. It was really the board's effort to try to give everyone an opportunity to speak about it if they wanted to and at least, you know, have the opportunity to air it out, no pun Anyone else?
Can I have a short glass of coffee to be turned, in case everybody wants to call?
Sure.
Is it okay to sit this table?
Yeah, absolutely.
Essentially allowing us to operate right down on Plymouth Street.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we'll wait a minute for...
Yep, sure, sure.
...come back.
No problem.
You good?
Something's stuck in my... Sorry to interrupt you.
Yes, no problem. No worries. So ultimately, you know, we really just want to have an opportunity, you know, essentially, you know, with the way that it's set up now, if a dispensary is open, you know, how would the town handle, you know, say, another restaurant trying to open within 500 feet of the dispensary? You know, so it's kind of looking at things from a backwards perspective. You set up a buffer where a restaurant with a pouring license can't open within 500 feet of an established retail cannabis dispensary. And that makes it difficult for entrepreneurs like ourselves and others to, you know, to open businesses in town. There are a few spaces that are available, and every single one of them is within 500 feet of a pouring license. There's even raw land that we considered buying to put up a building, but it's right across the street from the golf course, which has a country club which has a pouring license. So, you know, there's an effective ban, ban, you know, on a second retail store. And, you know, from our discussions with individuals in town, we got the feeling that, you know, without, you know, Halifax didn't set a cap on the amount of retail dispensaries they want to put out, and so we felt the town would be receptive of this, but then when we actually looked for space, we saw that the town set up rules that made it essentially impossible.
So you're asking the board to support a warrant article to repeal that?
I'm sorry.
So you're asking the Board of Selectmen to support an article that, it's a petition article, to repeal that part?
Correct.
By law?
Correct, yeah. The 500-foot buffer from a alcoholic pouring license, correct, yes.
Well, obviously, the town has been supportive of marijuana establishments based on votes of the town meetings. And we have made some concessions on some of our previous bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
To become a little less restrictive. I personally think it ought to be an initiative, a public initiative. You can get enough people to sign a petition to put it on a warrant article. I can't say that I myself would be supportive of it, of proposing an article. I, I, I think we've made a lot of concessions. Again, if you were to be able to promote enough people to sign.
Mm-hmm.
A petition and you could then have them put it on the warrant.
Yep.
It would be debated and voted upon.
I think we would be able to, you know, I'm, you know, one of the things that, that separates us from, from others, obviously, is that I'm, I am experienced in the industry. I, I own, I have multiple licenses and this is a secondary initiative that I'm, that I'm kickstarting. So we have the experience that a lot of other folks don't.
Yeah.
Uh, we also, you know, we're looking to not only create a retail store, we're also looking to, to manufacture product and have cultivation in there, small craft cultivation. So we're looking to bring in, you know, roughly 30 jobs into the town. And everywhere we go, we always give priority, we, we give priority hiring to local residents. And, you know, given the way things are now, you know, new jobs, new careers, not just hourly jobs, are, are in high demand. And that's what we feel that we can provide. And also, you know, Stacy, my, my business partner here, she has been creating an amazing line of cannabis-infused topicals that have done wonders for people with arthritis, psoriasis. She can actually give you.
Can I borrow a copy of my feedback folder if you'd like to read it at your leisure and keep it?
You know, and that's, that's what, we want to be both medical and adult use. This isn't really just about selling marijuana. This is really about providing for the needs of the community, um, not just smoking, but other, other avenues. And, you know, things like arthritis, you know, I, I use cannabis every day. I don't smoke cannabis. I, I use a coconut oil-based lotion that I put on my knees. You know, I've had multiple knee surgeries, played sports in college, my body is destroyed. I consume cannabis every day, not in a way that, you know, stereotyp- you know, typically you would, you would think, you know, and, and that's what she brings to the table is she has a large inventory of different types of products that are all topical-based that we feel that there is a very high demand for. So not only do we have the expertise, um, we have access to investors that would help fund this initiative. We also bring a unique product line to the, to the town and we, we bring a lot of opportunity for long-term employment. And, and that's why, you know, if we tell people in the community what we bring to the table, we do feel like we will get adequate support.
If you think about it logically, I'm not sure what banning within 500 feet of a pouring establishment actually accomplishes.
Mm-hmm.
But however, that's how it was set up. And as I commented earlier, we've made some concessions all, all along. And I think it, I personally think it ought to be a public initiative.
Mm-hmm.
From, from the citizenry and, uh, and let them kind of propose it, or at least a group from the citizenry to propose it. And then as a group, we dispose it, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
So you just want to remove the 500 feet from the pouring license?
Correct.
You're, you're proposing keeping the 500 feet from a school or take care?
Yes, we have to, under law.
Yep, then that's a state law.
That's a state law in the town.
Right, right. And I think, I, I think maybe the, the logic behind the ban, the 500-foot buffer, maybe because you, you, the town doesn't want people to buy cannabis and then consume it inside of a restaurant. But that's against the law in and, in and itself. Um, there's no public consumption allowed. There would not be any consumption in our parking lot. Um, if we see any of our customers going somewhere across the street or somewhere that, in our purview that we can see and, and consume our, our product, we, we have to call the police. Uh, these are things that we do now in our facility in Middleborough. Um, and, and these are the same protocols that we would bring here to Halifax. So I, I think that the buffer, um, I, I understand why, but it's, you know, it's not allowed anyway for somebody to, to bring it into a, a restaurant or a bar. And, and so, you know, the law is already in place to kind of prevent that anyway.
I'd just like to add, in addition to the 3% impact fee that the town would receive, we also tend to do like school, um, supply fundraisers. We would donate and do, um, fund drives for the Humane Society and other things to help the community.
Any other questions? That's right?
If I can get it out. The other businesses that you have, where are they located? How?
Uh, we're in Middleborough, which is heading towards Cape Cod, exit three.
I think. I got something large in my throat that's killing me.
Okay.
I think the whole idea of changing the buffers on for liquor stores. I don't have any real, real big problem with that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure whether I would vote for it, supported it, tell me, but at this point, because liquor, alcohol, the marijuana, both can induce the same type of problems. If you're talking this medical use, then I can agree with it.
Mm-hmm.
I'm also a medical patient myself.
I'd like to say that I think there's an unintended consequence for that 500-foot buffer zone. We're talking. So, I mean, we could essentially have a technical lock.
Right.
On the opposite side of that town acres and still be restricted, uh, with that lock line being a bottom property.
That, that's come up before.
It's, it, okay.
Yeah. I, I didn't mean to cut you off, but we're kind of aware of that. I don't know if you're looking for, for a vote as to whether the Board of Selectmen would support a warrant article. If that in fact is your request, we could in fact entertain a motion.
Sure.
Either support or not support.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that would get us off on the right track, for sure.
Any other comments, gentlemen?
I, I think that your perspective on it being a citizen's petition is what it should be.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. That's how I felt about it when I saw it on our paperwork. Mr. Garron, any comments?
I think the whole idea, when we put it in place, the 500-foot distance, it was for the protection of the public.
Right.
And I think the public needs to have a say as to whether or not we'll change that or not.
Well, ultimately, they would have the vote, but in terms of endorsement, I, I, I'm putting it.
I don't need that we take it under advisement.
You want to take it under advisement? Is that what you said? I, I, I don't think I can second that. Um, I, I would prefer to move that we do not endorse the Board of Selectmen putting it on a warrant and to put it out to the applicants to, in fact, uh, I, I don't know, this needs to be part of the motion, but to have them, in fact, go out and secure enough signatures to put it on a warrant article.
I could agree with that.
Can I get a second to that amendment?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to not support the Board of Selectmen entertaining putting an article on the town meeting to change the bylaw regarding the 500-foot distance from a pouring establishment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, unanimous. Again, it's not that hard to process. You wanted to pursue getting the citizenry to.
No, we care what the community thinks. We do care about the impact it would make on the community.
To, to be accurate, is it the least citizens of the town?
Yes, citizens of the town, correct, yeah.
Would property owners fall under that designation since they own property in town?
Any registered voter.
Any registered voter, okay.
So it's a, for a special town meeting, it's a hundred, it's a hundred voters sign the petition and that's due by March 1st.
Yeah, well.
If you wanted a special, if you wanted a special town meeting, it takes 200.
No, it's only 10 for, let me.
For what, for? Well, for annual, yeah, 10.
Yeah.
So, annual, you won't be able to get it on the annual town meeting this year because the annual town meeting is in two weeks. The warrant's done. That's, if you want to try and put it on the annual town meeting for May 22, you need the signatures of 10 registered voters no later than March 1st.
Mm-hmm.
If you, it, we may or may not have a special meeting between now and May 9th, 2022. If we do and you have an article that's already been sent in with 100 signatures, it will be on that warrant. But we don't know the date. We don't know that we're going to have one.
Okay.
If you wanted to force the issue, force the town to have a special town meeting, you would then gather 200 signatures and the board would then have to hold that special town meeting within a certain timeframe after the petition was received.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So in theory, it looks like we'd have to get 200 to, to get on the meeting, otherwise we have to wait till next year.
Even, even if we were to have supported it, it's too late.
Yeah.
For the annual.
Got you, okay.
Anything else?
Oops, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, sure, leave it right there. Thank you. Alright, where does that leave us now?
So we were at number seven on my notes.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we've got a few things to get done here. Uh, cable license renewal, the state has started its clock on the renewal of a cable license, uh, three years from the end date of the previous license. The current license right now is for April 24th of 2024. Um, I'm going to recommend that the board begin what's called the assertment process, which is reestablishing the cable committee, contacting the town's cable council attorney, Peter Epstein, for guidance when what, under the current laws, are subjects for which the town is freely negotiating, which does not include prices or channel selection, for instance. And it does not cover the internet. This is only cable, so. So if the board is interested in moving forward on that, I would need the board to vote a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Flower and Soul Retail Marijuana Facility Attorney Mayo and Councilor Flower and Soul reached tentative agreement on their post-committee agreement. You each have a copy. Does the board wish to have the HCA posted online and request comments? And if so, what would be a deadline date for the board receiving those comments and a possible date for making a decision about whether to approve the HCA or not?
Three weeks?
Yeah, three weeks is good.
Three weeks?
Yes. Um, just so the board is aware, the planning board will.
Chris Winowitz, 129 Circuit Street. Do the comments have to be emailed or will there be a public hearing?
It's up to the board. I mean.
You just have to email them and you guys will review them?
Well, we should probably air them at a public meeting.
Well, if you're going to have a public meeting, then you're unlikely to be doing it town meeting week, your next.
Yeah, so the.
Regular meeting's in four weeks.
Right.
On May 25th. So if the board.
Change it to four weeks, yeah.
Okay. So what the board would do then is they would include holding a hearing for public comments on the HCA on May 25th.
Yeah.
I don't have a time yet. It's not a legal hearing in the sense of like, we have to propose, you know, we're going to notify everybody and everything, but we're not going to do, um, certified letters and things like that. But notices will be up on the website. I'll know, send out to press, et cetera, but it'll be on, on May 25th.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Uh, planning board's going to hold a public hearing by May 6th on the site plan and then also on May 20th on the special permit. The applications for the site plan approval and the special permit are in the mail folder, also online. Finance committee, we had a resignation. Lauren Carmichael resigned effective March 25th, 2021. Um, I appreciated her service, you know, obviously she was only there, on there for a few months, but, um, we needed to.
Yeah, a letter of appreciation is definitely in order.
We'll get one out. Uh, Boy Scout Bottle Drive, tentative date for the next drive is Saturday, July 17th. Permission to use the town hall green with whatever protocol, COVID protocols are still needed at that date.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Similarly, the Historical Society Plant Sale, they requested to use the town hall green on May 8th with sales from 9:00 a.m. to noon and set up starting at 6:00 a.m., again with whatever necessary COVID protocols.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Um, you asked the question on the tuition reimbursement for patrol officer Hinks to be carried over to tonight's meeting. I'm not going to do the same narration I provided the board a couple of weeks ago. It's there in the notes. I don't know what the board's preference is on, uh, handling that question of the tuition reimbursement.
He got that in late, right?
Yes. For the year we're in now, he needed to have sent it in by September of 19. For next year, he would have had to have submitted it under the contract by September of 2020.
By having submitted it now, it's in for the next?
No, well, it'll be for 2023. And he said, he, he's going to be done with a degree by then. I don't know if he's going to be interested in going for his bachelor's or not. I believe he's going for his associate's right now.
Right.
But under the terms of the contract, unless the board made an exception, he would not be eligible for tuition reimbursement for the year we're in now or for next year.
So the real issue is the date that he sent it in?
Correct.
Shall we have a minute?
Yep.
Yeah, I believe I was saying he is, um, going for his bachelor's degree. He's, uh, he's not going to continue on. So I think, um, his request should well likely be held by the board for fiscal 2023.
Right. Yeah, I mean, for fiscal 23, yes.
Right.
Well, that leaves it easier.
So he's not looking for this year?
Well, I think.
The chief is saying.
I think the chief's indicating that. It wasn't that clear in what he had sent the board previously.
So chief, chief, he's not looking for reimbursement for this year? He's looking to put us on notice for next fiscal year?
That's correct. As Charlie said, uh, according to the chief's opinion, he, he can request to the board, but he didn't put his request in, uh, in a timely fashion. Like, he shouldn't put in for this year, last fiscal year, which he didn't do. So I think it's attempting to get reimbursement, but I, I don't believe it was in a timely fashion. So, uh, um, he, he'd have to, you know, put in this request. I mean, I, I assume this, I guess, request that he put it in now would be carried over when he, you know, when he, when, in 2024, which could be, that might be open for reimbursement for the property taken out.
Well, if he's good with that and he's not requesting it now, I, I.
Well, he, I, I think his, his request was in the hopes of obtaining the reimbursement. But like Charlie said, if you abide the contract, you're not entitled to, uh, I think that it's just a compromise.
Well, that's, that's what it seems to be based on what I'm reading. What's our pleasure, gentlemen?
I, I'm not in favor of paying it out this year. We have the contract in place and.
Right.
He put it in a timely basis next year. He put it next to the year, then we could look at it, but this is.
Yeah.
If we're talking 2024, 2023, 2020?
So if he's applying now, he would be eligible for tuition reimbursement for courses taken between July 1st, 22 and June 30th of 2023.
Yeah.
And what I can do is formalize that. He does have to, for instance, list the courses he's taking and things like that. But this certainly would make him eligible to do so and we can make sure the process works in his favor for fiscal 23.
That seems reasonable.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Do we want to put that in the form of a motion?
Do you, do you want the motion to be, we, we received the letter and this will count as his designation before September 1st of 2021?
Correct.
And we're not issuing any.
And it'll be in 2223?
If that's the correct wording, then yes.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Was that a motion, Gordon?
Yeah.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vacation carryover, Patrol Officer Cushman. Officer Cushman has been on 111F since February 23rd. Uh, he has a next check-in on May 11th. Uh, the chief is requesting that Officer Cushman be allowed to carry over 112 hours of vacation leave from fiscal 21 to 22, which would be more than the board had previously approved, which was 80 for the, uh, everybody. Uh, due to these circumstances, he's also. circumstances, he's also requesting the 111F leave. He continued to May 11th. But I don't believe that an additional vote by the board's necessary for that. In essence, unless there was a reason the board felt he needed to be taken off 111F, he stays on 111F, you know, through whatever doctors' reports the board's receiving. So I think the only question would be the vacation carryover.
Well, if he's not, if he's not in work, he can't take the hours. So I would make a motion to approve the chief's request.
I'll second that, inasmuch as he can't use it towards a sick time.
Right. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye. I just want to tell the board that Halifax, where several of the communities working with the Old Colony Plan Council, was awarded 71,220 to replicate economic development projects that Easton had started during the pandemic. Easton had done, Easton outside, and we are open for business at Easton, campaigns to drive consumers to local restaurants, businesses, arts, and recreation venues. And I'll be continuing to work with OCPC for efforts, similar efforts here in Halifax.
Nice work.
Municipal Volatility Preparedness and Hazard Mitigation Plan. OCPC's been hosting several workshops in connection with this program. The first on infrastructure was last week. The second on environmental concerns was yesterday. There'll be a third on societal concerns, which will be on Thursday. All of these are open to the public via Zoom. A draft report's going to be written based on the workshops and data collection presented for public input on May 6th, likely at 6:00 p.m. Again, it'll be another Zoom meeting. Wage and personnel bylaws for possible amendments. I'm still working on grade six and seven information collected from our comparable communities. I did not get a chance to get more work done between typing all this up and tonight. So I'll make sure to continue work on that and get that out to the board and Finance Committee this week for review next week. The board does, had talked to the Finance Committee or with the Finance Committee last night about recommending an across-the-board increase for non-union employees. There have been discussion, any discussion for increases for union members needs to be held in executive session. I understand it's been a tough year for many, including unemployment and underemployment for many residents here in Halifax. However, the town's employees have, in general, worked above and beyond during the pandemic, but few have any complaints. As much as there's a possibility of some of the new rescue funds can be used for bonuses, those are one-time payments, not part of the permanent pay. I understand that the full Silver Lake assessment is approved, and I know the Finance Committee is not recommending that, but town meeting will make its own decision. And if Kingston and Plimpton vote for it, we eventually will have to approve it also. But that assessment will be including a 1.6% pay increase for those employees at Silver Lake, leaving then the town's employees without anything. And it would be the school, at the elementary school, and also the non-school employees, union and non-union. I think that if Silver Lake is going to be receiving a 1.6% pay increase for its employees, the town's employees, including the school, union, non-union, deserve something similar. Not necessarily exact, but I know that the Finance Committee and the board secretary were discussing the possibility of doing a 1% across the board. I'm not asking the board to make a specific decision tonight. The Finance Committee would be meeting again about this on Monday, but I will ask that the board consider that as a possibility if money's available at the town meeting on May 10th. Surplus Equipment. The library would like to dispose of three MOV flush computer chairs.
You can't close the door.
Charlie, you're gonna, you'll go?
We'll wait for her to get back up here. I don't know that, I think you could vote about the computer chairs.
So moved.
You would think so.
So I would take, I would happy to accept a motion.
Are those computer chairs better than the chairs that are...
That were sitting?
No. I can ask. I'll get a photograph from Jean. She's not on anymore, so, but I can ask her tomorrow.
I know some of the chairs downstairs and the other meeting room are pretty rough, too.
Well, why we, you can still declare them surplus, but I can check with all the departments, and we can get the photographs.
Make a motion to declare them surplus.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye. The Fire Department announced various awards for 2020. Firefighter of the Year, and I'm going to mispronounce his name, probably sure of it, Jeff Assieri? Is it Assieri?
Arcieri?
Office of the Year was Matthew Cunningham. Citizen Hero of the Ward was the Halifax Building Maintenance Staff, and there were commendations to Joseph Gibbons and Kendra Kelly. Gibbons was instrumental in obtaining the town's PPE supplies, and Kelly handled the administration of the town's testing and vaccination programs. And I don't know why I put E in there, because I think that got cut off from the marijuana facility text. Traffic signs. Circuit Street and Laurel Street. As part of the discussions elsewhere about the proposed Flower and Soul Retail Marijuana Facility, a butler's asked about the possibility of placing neighborhood traffic only and speed limits strictly enforced. The police chief did send back a comment pointing out some legal problems with the signage and policy. I'm not asking for the board to take any action. This could also be referred to the Traffic Safety Committee, and I'll do that. Sale of open space. The board may be aware that there's a large swath of open...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Jean Lysinski, 110 Circuit Street. I saw that line item, and I wanted to also make a request that a four-way stop sign be set up Circuit and Laurel. Not just a cut-through, but it seems that this new business has people in their pockets, and it's probably going to happen. And there's no way you're going to avoid traffic cutting down Circuit Street. Recently, we did...
You want to speak to the board? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
Recently, they added two stop signs on Laurel Street, which basically makes Circuit Street straight through. So now people, knowing they're safe and they don't have to look left or right, they go quicker down Circuit Street. Now, if you're going to increase the traffic, like to see a stop, four-way stop sign at least, so that it will force people to slow down.
So you all talked about this last year?
Yeah, exactly. This came up once before.
Right. And you put stop signs stopping traffic on Laurel, the short street. Nobody...
I think it was because Steve looked into the legality of...
Well, overall, I think it's overall, there's fewer cars. You mentioned Laurel as being the shortest street. There are fewer cars going through Laurel than through Circuit. And there's probably...
No, more cars go through Circuit than Laurel.
Right, yes. Fewer cars go through Laurel than Circuit. More cars go through Circuit than Laurel. And I think what Steve had recommended back to the board was just the ones for Laurel, because given the total traffic volume involved at that intersection, that a four-way stop sign wasn't appropriate. Now, the board can go back to Steve and the Traffic Safety Committee, I mean, with the concept you've mentioned, and ask again, especially with the possibility of the business coming in.
Okay.
Yeah. That would be the way to handle it, Jean.
Okay.
And we can do that, and we'll do that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Sale of open space. Large swath of open space parcels, including those off of River Street and Halifax, are up for sale by auction on May 26th and May 27th. The state's aware of this, but can't participate in the auctions. Basically, logistically, they're not set up. They're set up to buy property, but not at auction. It has a time, the state has at times tried to purchase one or more of the parcels, but without success. The owners haven't been interested. I don't see anything the town can do unless we set up a special town meeting and made appropriate money for a possible purchase, and then participate in the auctions. Otherwise, the only other possibility, I guess, would be whether it was trustees of the reservation or another land trust. You know, I'm sure they're aware of the sale. They're in the business of knowing these things. They themselves could do it, but those are the options. I don't see any other way of handling, of trying to preserve that land.
Tom, did, Charlie, I know we talked about it before, about the U.S. Army Corps Engineers looking into that land in the 90s, but the lawsuit went all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court over the fines that happened on the refilling end of the land, the Great Seabees Swamp, and the land off of River and 105. Do we have copies of what restrictions were applied to that? I'm not, I think it would be beneficial to the town to review what those restrictions are for all that land, because basically, the way I read it is they ripped out all the wetlands out of River, Ravenbrook, that went through there? I'm not sure if that's the exact...
Let me see if Larry, I'll follow up with Larry. I'll follow up with Larry and see if he can find something.
Okay. Because it just seems like if they're going to start to develop that, and we know that there's restrictions, we should be applying those restrictions.
715 Old Plymouth Street. We had an initial enforcement letter sent concerning issues of junk accumulation on registered vehicles at the property. If nothing changes, I'll send a certified letter next week and then bring that back to the board on May 25th for any enforcement action that the board wishes. Halifax was listed as a top spot to live, community south of Boston, by the Boston Globe on the 21st. It's a nice designation, at least somebody knows where we are, at the very least. Walmart Car Shows. The Connecting Rods Auto Club has been in touch with the Board of Health about holding the shows later this year. With the governor's announcements today, the stipulations for holding the shows will likely change. I'm sure that the Board of Health agent will be in touch with them. Again, there's no action for the board. I just wanted the board to know that the organizers are going to try and get something done later this summer. We already did the state mosquito control opt-out. Field zone horse shows on April 22nd. The Board of Health agent had written that the large event application was on hold until the water test results were received, and between then and now, the results were submitted. So as far as I know, that roadblock has been removed, but I'll check with Bob to make sure there are no other outstanding issues. I've set up a preliminary meeting with GATRA to examine the possibility of having Halifax become part of that regional operation. We're looking at this pre-pandemic. Crucial to this would be how we supplement the current elder bus operation. Council and Aging Director Wallace had written that because of the purchase of the new vehicles, there's less need by the town possibly, or by the Council on Aging, for GATRA services. But I'll talk to them in a couple of weeks and see what they might be able to provide in terms of us joining that operation. For 4 Upton Street. I'm currently working through the possible sale of this town-owned property. I'd been working on the premise that concerning its foreclosure and lack of use and occupancy, it had been classified as abandoned and could not be reused for residential purposes. Selective Andrews had asked that, given the recent ZBA decisions on properties from Mount Potts, the street, and Ocean Abbey, check with Land Use Council about whether this remain the case. In fact, I heard from Attorney Questle after I wrote this. Basically, what she said was it needs to go for determination back to the building inspector. So I guess the thing would be is if the board would like to, we're going to, there's a couple of things going on. One is this possible sale of property, which would then be connected to zoning, because I think interested parties would pay different amounts for the property depending on whether it's redevelopable or not. The other thing the board has to note, however, is that I believe the end of next week, we won't have insurance on that structure anymore. So, because it's in such poor condition and abandoned, at least, not in the legal sense, but in the physical sense, it's been abandoned, derelict. Just so we're aware of that situation.
Are we talking about liability insurance?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Not building insurance, obviously. They're not insured. Yeah, just making sure.
So my intent would be to go back to Rob and ask, put that in writing, and get an answer from him, right, as to whether he's, a determination whether the use has been abandoned and cannot be brought back?
So just so the board's aware, the zoning board made a determination that the use of the old theater building could be turned into residential, because it's a residentially-zoned area, and they could rebuild on the same foundation that was there. So if there's still a foundation for this piece of property, and the use is residential, it would seem that the same determination would apply here, that the building could, a residential use could be built on that structure.
Yeah. Throwing into that mix, though, is abandonment.
Well, no, because...
What constitutes abandonment?
Because Attorney Questle...
Well, except that we were dealing with going from one use to a different use. And the residential use was never abandoned, because it was never started, if we're talking about uses. That makes it possibly different than what we're dealing with for them. But I'm happy to bring it to Rob for determination.
Yeah. That's the place to start.
What I'm going to do, however, given that, is suspend the sale, because I can't...
I think that makes sense, because if it's a buildable lot...
Yeah, it's obviously worth more.
Town meetings and the budget. I just put this in, if there was any necessary general discussion, I've posted the pre-town meeting for May 4th at 7:00 o'clock. It'll be via Zoom. I know, Gordon, you're going to be late to that.
Yeah, I'm going to be upstairs here for the elementary school meeting.
Then you can log in after that.
Yeah.
Just for FYI, that property actually had a special permit at one time. And then I'm not sure what happened to the builder, but he never went through with it.
Travel policy. On the auditor's to-do list for the town was establishing a formal travel policy concerning reimbursement. We're going to have the town accountant take a look at a draft, and I'll bring that to the board in May. Maryland's Landing. McDonald Industries is looking for a letter of support to allow catch basin materials to be accepted as part of the earth filling operation at the landing off of Route 106. I'd like to check with the Board of Health and Mass DEP about this. There may be some financial benefit for the town in the sense of, in a sense, the town may be able to capture a slight tipping fee for materials coming in from other communities. There are very few places that will accept the catch basin materials, but they're clean or, as clean or cleaner than the street sweeping, which they're already taking, which is why the DEP is going to allow that. But I'm going to follow through with them and the Board of Health before doing even a letter of support, let alone any sort of agreement. And anything like that, I'd be bringing back to the board anyway.
Tom?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Amy, you got to go up to the...
Amy L. Troop, Ten Hillside Avenue. I wanted to know where Maryland's Landing is?
Yeah, it's, if you take, go all the way to the line on 106. So the south side, where the old landfill was, there were two landfills, the Republic landfill and the BFI landfill. Those two, plus the swale that's in between, basically at the town line, is Maryland's Landing. They're bringing fill in on a very long-term scale, which I think they've been doing like for now five years. They may be doing it for another five years.
It's actually Bridgewater. That's why it's confused.
Oh, well, it's on both sides of the...
Yeah, yeah, but Maryland's Landing is, the filling is going on.
I'd never heard it in Halifax. That's why I was asking.
So the, and then eventually, they're going to raise the site to a certain height and then put a solar field on there.
Okay.
State budget. The House budget was neutral for the town versus the governor's. Unfortunately, Silver Lake, through changes in aid and assessments, lost 30K. I've not heard back from Senator Brady or Representative Sinatra about a budget discussion. I guess I should have asked while she was here. You know, we were happy to try and get something set up at their convenience. Still a possibility of doing that. We had a discussion about, with Colonel Booth, about the zoning bylaw and marijuana, and then South Street traffic signs. And Owen Graves met with you all tonight already. I believe that's all I've got for public session. I do need to go into executive session to discuss the patrol officers, sergeants, highway units, unit, fire department, police chief, and fire chief contracts, in that holding discussions in public session would be detrimental to the town's negotiating position.
Would you like to include that Halifax Elementary in that list as well?
Sorry.
To make the motion?
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Millius, yes. Unanimous.
Okay.
Take a short break and...